Okay, the time is now 6:00 PM. Our regular city council meeting for January 7th, 2025 is now in session. Now, we are experiencing some audio and video difficulties and we regret the inconvenience. With that, first on the agenda is Councilmember Hayward will lead us with the opening prayer and the pledges of allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas. Please rise.
Before I pray, I'd like to read a verse Jeremiah 29:11. For I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord, plans to prosper, to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and hope and a future. I believe this ties in with us going into a new year. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today at the dawn of the new year, we come before you with gratitude for the opportunity to continue to serve our community. We thank you for the blessings, excuse me, the blessings of the past year and the lessons learned through both challenges and triumphs. We ask for your guidance as we start this new year as it is a new chapter. Grant us wisdom to make decisions that reflect the needs and interests of our citizens. Help us to listen with open ears and minds and analyze the different perspectives among us to come to a common goal. Inspire us to work collaboratively together for the betterment of our city, focusing on sustainable growth, safety, and well-being of our residents. As we began to set goals for this year, let us be reminded of our responsibility to serve with integrity, compassion, and humility. May we be good stewards of the resources entrusted to us. Bless our community with hope and resilience as we continue to face the issues that come with growth. Together, we may strive to build a city that embodies the values we hold dear. In your son's name, I pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayward. All right, first on the agenda is we have employee introductions. First is animal services.
Evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager and Staff. I'm Lieutenant Lacour and I have the pleasure to introduce you, one of your newest kennel technicians at our animal services building, Ms. Carla Cardona. She started on December 16th, 2024, and she's already said she has amazing coworkers. Her experience, she says, isn't perfect, but she can't wait to excel and make memories with them all. She was born and raised in San Antonio, and she graduated from South San Antonio High School in 2023, which was a great achievement for her, and she's just recently was accepted into the Palo Alto College in the Veterinary Technology Program. That was a difficult task for her, and she's very proud of it. She says she loves current hobbies, her building Legos and coloring her multiple coloring books. I don't know about this next one, but I'm gonna read it. One fun fact about herself is that she loves the winter cold, and it's her favorite type of weather. She's got plenty of it. She loves hanging out with her friends and meeting others. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Carla Cardona.
I would like to thank you guys today for having me out here, experiencing these new opportunities. I truly do appreciate it. Thank you guys very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Williams. Tonight, I have three new EMS employees to introduce to you. First up, I have Steve Aiman. He's a part-time EMT with us. Steve started with the city November 18th of 2024 and grew up in the Shirts area and has been here most of his adult life. He's a graduate of Stephen F. Austin University, completed the Shirts EMS Academy EMT program in 2024. He has worked for in EMS for approximately three months now, excited to be here at Shirts. He's married with one daughter and is an avid cyclist, so welcome, Steve.
I appreciate the opportunity, everyone. I'm really excited to work from my hometown.
Welcome to our team.
Next for you tonight, I have Noah Ellis. He is also a part-time EMT with the EMS department. He started in November as well. He grew up and currently lives here in Shirts. Noah attended the San Antonio College and the Shirts EMT Academy. He obtained his EMT certification through us. He's worked in EMS for a little less than a year with experience in the volunteer fire department as well. He comes from a family full of EMS, and he's very excited to work in the same city that he has his family at. So just welcome, Noah.
Thank you, guys, for this opportunity and like to make the most of it. Pleasure to meet all of you guys.
Welcome to our team.
Last but not least, Valentin Hernandez. He goes by Val. He is a full-time paramedic with us. He also started in November. He grew up in the Shirts area and has recently moved back into Shirts about a year ago. He attended Shirts EMT Academy and then obtained his paramedic certification recently in November of 2024. He's worked in EMS for approximately two years. He's been married for three years now. He's expecting his first child in two weeks. So he enjoys spending time with his two dogs and his cat at home, so welcome to Val.
Thank you all for this opportunity. It's an honor and it's a blessing to serve the community that I grew up in.
Welcome to our team. Next, we have Neighborhood Services.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Mr. Williams. I am pleased to introduce our newest code enforcement officer, Patrick McIntyre. Patrick's hometown is Brooklyn, New York, and before joining our city team, he worked as an electric electrical apprentice. Fun fact about Pat, he can draw a good Snoopy from memory. He makes a mean stir fry and won the West End Elementary Geography Bowl. We are excited to have him join Neighborhood Services. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you for the opportunity. If you ever want to try my stir fry, just let me know.
Welcome to our team. Next, we have Parks.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Mr. Williams. I have the pleasure of introducing Stephen Lovelace. He is our newest part-time maintenance technician, has only been with us a couple of days. He has served six years in the United States Marine Corps Reserves with the Military Occupation Specialty of Machine Gunner in the Infantry. He completed his service with the rank of sergeant. He received an associate's degree from Northeast Lakeview Community College and completed his bachelor's degree in the spring from Texas A&amp;M University, whoop, where he studied ecology and conservation biology. I'm so excited to have another Aggie on the team. Somehow, I have not been able to surround myself with people that bleed maroon, but as you know, I force them to wear maroon in their uniforms. Thank you, Stephen, for being there.
Howdy, y'all. Pleasure to meet y'all and only worked a couple of days, but I did get to work this weekend and getting to do the Touch a Truck event was a lot of fun to see the kids enjoy it.
Welcome to our team. Next, we have Police.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Williams. I am Lieutenant Calice with the Shirts Police Department, and I have the privilege of introducing two new patrol officers. First, we have Jonathan Bagby. He comes from a small town in Iowa, and he works, his background is communications, where he worked in high school as well as our United States Air Force. After the military, he continued his communication background before starting as a patrol officer in Midland Police Department. He worked as a patrol officer, crisis negotiator, and intoxicizer operator before coming to the city of Shirts in December. He has been married since 2018. He has one daughter and one baby boy on the way. He has, he enjoys spending time with his family, hunting, and fishing. I would like to introduce to you Jonathan Bagby.
Thank you for having me, and I'm excited to start my new career here.
Welcome, welcome to our team.
Next, I would like to introduce to you Francisco Lopez III. Francisco comes to us from San Marcos, and he has served in our United States Navy for four and a half years as a master at arms. He also worked in the law enforcement in Diego Garcia, located in the British India Ocean Territory for 12 months. He spent the remainder of his contract as a nuclear weapons security specialist and the Marine Security Service, uh, Security Force Battalion's Navy Armory Supervisor in Silverdale, Washington. He was honorably discharged in 2003, uh, thirteen, uh, sorry, 2023. He is married to a, also a US militar, US Navy machinist, mate auxiliary on the US Michigan. They both have a one-year-old daughter, and they have a baby boy on the way as well. They loves, he loves spending time with his wife and family, and his favorite things to do is going to the gym and playing anything active sports-wise.
Yes, again, thank you for your time. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'm excited to serve this community.
Welcome to our team.
Good evening, Mayor Gutierrez, Mr. Williams, and members of council. I have the honor today of introducing Luis Gonzalez, who was hired December 16th as a telecommunications officer. Luis was born in Pierceall, raised in Dilly, not far, and he is relocated here to the Shirts area, and he's kind of excited about that. He has a younger brother who teaches at Randolph High School. He is engaged, looking to get married by the end of the year in November, and he has hobbies of reading, playing guitar, video games with friends, and looking to travel and hoping to get back into hunting and fishing. Please welcome Luis.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm a pretty small-town guy, so I don't have much to say to my name besides my kids. I'll do my best not to let everybody down.
Well, welcome to our team, Luis. And next, we have Utility Billing.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. We are pleased to introduce Marvin Burkett, our new meter technician at the utility billing office, who recently started December 16th. Growing up in Shirts, Marvin brings a wealth of experience and dedication, having retired after 26 years of active service in the Air Force. Marvin and his wife Abby have been happily married for 35 years and proud parents of two sons who are currently training in Phoenix to become pilots with the United Airlines. We are excited to welcome Marvin to our team and look forward to the valuable contributions he will make in his role. Please join us in extending him a warm welcome.
All right, I get the last word here. Kara said I had to keep this to 45 minutes, so I was born and wake, no, I'm looking forward to this. It's finally good to be back home. I've been out with the dogs bark, so glad to be here.
Welcome to our team. Right, next, we have announcements of upcoming events.
Oh, sorry, Mayor, yes. Okay, get back on track here. All right, so on Saturday, January 11th, the Shirts Family YMCA will be hosting the Polar Bear 5K and Plunge. So the 5K is a new addition this year. It will be at 9:00 AM at Pickle Park, and for more information, you can look on the Athlete Guild website or just Google Shirts Family YMCA, and the information is there. January 13th through January 24th, Republic will be picking up Christmas trees, and we have more information about that on our newsflash on our city website, just information about days that they pick up, and if there's any questions, folks can contact the utility billing office at 210-619-1100. On Monday, January 10th, city offices will be closed for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. On January 21st, we will be back here for our next regularly scheduled council meeting at 6:00 PM. And finally, information on the runoff election, which will be on January 18th to elect the place of Place Four. The last day to early vote is on Tuesday, January 14th, and more information on locations to vote and any information you need on voting is on our website at shirts.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Mr. Williams.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I wanted to say congratulations to Sidney Perides in the Parks Department. She got the, the Traps Text Turn internship, so it's, it's a play on words for intern, but it's a $1,000 scholarship to cover her expenses to go to their Leadership Institute and shadow some of the, be mentored by some of the leadership in the organization as well as attend the conference. Also, we had a couple of promotions in the month of December. Irene Chavez was promoted from administrative assistant to purchasing specialist, and Adam Rodriguez promoted from police cadet to police officer. So congratulations to all three of them. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Announcements and recognitions by the mayor. I just want to say thank you to all the city staff for making, for the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, the parade, and Blue Sand impossible. It's great to, to see the staff out there and getting the holiday season started. Appreciate it so much. With that, we'll move on to the hearing of residents. This time is set aside for any person who wishes to address the city council. Each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask before addressing the council, for the record, please state your name and address. Now, we do have a few public hearings, so if it's entirely up to, it's your choice. You can speak at the hearing of residents, or you can hold off until the public hearing, or you can speak at both. The option is yours. Mayor Pro Temp, please call our first speaker.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Williams, thank you for this opportunity. I, Benjamin Guerrero, living in 506 Capicourt Lane, want to take this time to highly encourage all registered voters in Shirts to come out and vote during the early voting or on Election Day, 18 January 2025. I am retired military of over 21 years of service, completed deployments in Iraq, assigned to the First Infantry Division in Tikrit, Iraq in 2004, assigned to the First Armor Division in Baghdad, Iraq in 2010, currently employed with the government in Fort Samhouston, appointed to the Charter Review Committee in 2024, attended every council meeting the past four months, attended over 10 city events over the past four months, and been living in Shirts since 2015. If elected to city council Place Four, I will concur with low city taxes, owner property rights, city zoning, repairing infrastructure with best value, ensuring our first responders have the latest training and equipment, and willing to assist our city council as a team player to resolve all challenges encountered. As a special announcement, I want to thank the Guadalupe County Conservative Republicans for their endorsement. I want to thank the Shirts Police Association for their endorsement, and I want to thank Mr. Roy Richard for his endorsement. As we all know, all elections are important, whether it's federal, state, or local. Therefore, I, I ask all registered voters to come out and show your American patriotism to vote for the right candidate in this runoff election for city council Place Four on 18 January 2025. In closing, I thank the entire city of Shirts leadership for the opportunity to speak. Thank you all.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, city staff, city manager, Daniel Jamison, 1048 Richmond Drive, Shirts, Texas. And if you look in the Shirts magazine for this month, you'll find that the Lowe's Hardware Store has donated over $30,000 in upgrading our VFW post right here on 78. Believe it or not, they want to come back and do more. Coming up, we got our breakfast, $10, eggs, all you can eat. You can't beat it. You go to IHOP, you're gonna pay more than that for a meal like that. Coffee, orange juice, water, eggs to order, so please, guys, come out, support your veterans, your local veterans, because that's who's doing the cooking, the veterans and auxiliary. Thank you.
Michelle Terleski, 705 Maryland Drive, in Shirts, of course. Mayor Gutierrez, members of council, Mr. Williams, Mr. Santi, hope you have a good start of a new year. I'd like to recognize two departments in our city that recently helped some senior citizens, and I don't know if you know it or not, but we have a lot of senior citizens that either their children aren't around to help them, or their neighbors and friends are their same age, and it's difficult for them sometimes to, to do some minor things. So the first department I want to recognize is our fire department. Two of my senior friends had the fire department come out to assist them with their smoke detectors, and they're basically in not good health, but anyway, that meant a lot to them, and I want to thank the fire department for doing that. Second is our public works. We sometimes look at our public works as, ah, they're just public works, and they're not part of the first responders, but let me tell you, if you think you have a water leak, or you see a sewer or a main water pipe broken on your street, you realize they are also first responders. And I would like to thank Jared, and I didn't get the lady's name that I called, but I appreciate them coming out, Jared coming out and helping me. Thank you.
Is there any way to project anything up there, or, um, I should have asked earlier, I suppose. If not, I could just pass it around. Do you want me to just do that? Okay, may I just, you can pass this around. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jill Moore. I live at 3534 Woodlawn Farms in Shirts, and I've been writing a few emails to you because I've been trying to figure something out. Last March was a zoning commission hearing for a large development that was due near the intersection of Irish Creek and Savannah. Thank God, it was too congested, it was turned down. We're facing another development there, which actually is not bad. It isn't bad. I saw the drawing back on December 4th, but the problem remains the intersection of Savannah and Irish Creek, and I just, if there was a way to solve that gore point where, where it would come out at, it, it would be fine if we could just do that. Because the city mandated that when the builders built Kensington Ranch, that's why the road curves that way. So with the outlet there, with curves on both, blind curves on both sides, to have that as an outlet is just not safe, even for the poor people that will be in Phase One of this drawing I, I gave to, it's not very good. I had to put it together with my computer, because Universal City will have a development that butts right up next to it. That's fine, but my suggestion was simply to, for the sake of the people that will be part of this development, and I'm within the 200 feet, if there was a way to make that emergency exit entrance there only, and then provide the road that was in an original drawing, it's not in this one, the original drawing had a road that went along Deets Creek to, to Maskey, and then it would be much safer for the people inside of that development, and they would have services easier because of that opening. But even what I'm suggesting for emergency vehicles, you would have to have, I understand you would have to put lights, blinking lights that stop traffic on each side of that, but I think people in our development would consider that and maybe accept it as safer than the, what you see in that drawing there, where there could be hundreds of cars feed right back through Savannah and Irish Creek, and my understanding, if it's still correct, is you cannot put a light there as it is right now because of the blind curves. So I just wanted, I wish I could stay for the outcome. That's why I'm speaking now instead of when you get to number seven, because that's, that's what it is. But I just, if there's a way, I would even tell the builder, the way things were left at the zoning meeting, maybe he, it was a nice drawing, it was nice. It's always going to be that intersection that's, that's the problem child, and if there's a way to come together so everybody wins, I think my neighbors, we'd all be very happy. So I just ask you, consider it. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can just keep the drawing, I, if you need, I think I sent it to all of you, but sorry. Thank you.
All right, that's it on the public key, right? All right, we'll move on. Concerned agenda items are considered self-explanatory, and information packets are provided to council and available for public viewing. These items require no separate discussion unless requested by the council. Item number one, minutes. Item number two, resolution number 24R143, and item number three, resolution number 25R001. Council, do any of these need to be removed for separate action? Yes, Councilmember Davis.
Item three.
Item three, okay, we are removing item three. We'll have that for discussion. Council, any others? Do I have motion to approve concerning agenda items one and two?
No move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Watson, second by Mayor Pro Temp Westbrook. Any other comments? All right, we will call for the vote. We'll start with Councilmember Watson.
Aye or nay? Yeah, because the electronics isn't working.
Okay, Councilmember Mark Aluso.
Aye.
Member Pro Temp.
Aye.
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 We have six ayes, no objection, motion passes. We'll move on to item number three, resolution number 25R001, authorizing the EMS utility building, Shirts Magazine and library debt revenue adjustments. And is Mr. Walters here to provide the?
I think, I think Sarah is gonna take.
Ms. Gonzalez, all right.
Oh, I didn't know if you were gonna make a presentation or not. I just have a quick question. Looking, looking at the information in our, our packet, the magazine has a write-off of like $2,600. I had thought in the past that we had implemented some kind of process or procedure to eliminate the potential for write-offs. I'm, I'm assuming this is from people advertising?
So, and yes, Linda's here and can speak to this.
In our, in our magazine, and I, I thought in our previous discussions, we had said, well, if they're advertising, if they want to advertise in our magazine, why would we let them advertise and then send them a bill that could result in a potential write-off when we should, I thought, I thought the, the understanding was that they were going to pay for it, and then we would run our ads then, and then you wouldn't have a need for, for a write-off.
Yes, so we had discussed moving more towards credit card payment, so if we had credit cards on file, we'd be running those and, and hopefully mitigate some of that. We haven't had a write-off for the magazine in seven or eight years. This particular write-off is one account, and it's two ads, so it happened to be full-page So it happened to be full-page ads. They'd been an advertiser with us going all the way back to 2021 and we had no issues. I am not sure if the company went out of business, but we ran one ad in April. We sent them the invoice on the first of the month. During that month, we're preparing for the following month. So they ended up getting run in May. However, they never made payment for April and then they never made payment for May. We pulled them for June and then we started the process of trying to collect. We have never heard back from them. So unfortunately, it was a situation where we had a good relationship with the client and then we never heard from them again.
Yeah, it just caught me off guard because like I said, I know we had not had a write-off for the magazine for like ever. And then all of a sudden it popped up again. So good, thank you for the explanation.
Council, any other questions? Do we have motion to approve resolution number 25R001?
So moved.
Do we have? We have motion made by Councilmember Davis and second by Councilmember Watson. Council, any other comments? All right. We'll start with Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Watson.
Aye.
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 We have six ayes, no objections. Motion passes. All right. We'll move on to item number four, resolution number 25R006, articulating the city of Shirts position on potential truck bypass routes on FM 2252. Mr. James.
Thank you, Brian James, Deputy City Manager. As the staff report lays out, periodically, we deal with transportation issues that are bigger than the city. They happen on a regional basis. And in this case, in working with some of the folks from Garden Ridge, they have concern and issue with some of the trucks using FM 2252. We can certainly appreciate that. We certainly would concur with some of those concerns. And certainly, the city has been involved in some areas where we can with truck route and truck traffic in the area. But in particular, the sort of initial effort was to essentially create a truck bypass route that would not allow trucks to continue to take that direct route essentially from FM 1377, 1337, where it changes to 2252, all the way to 3009. Essentially, the idea would be have trucks have to take the spur of 2252, which goes down toward 35 where 482 comes in by Fire Station 2, to avoid all of that traffic or reduce the amount of traffic taking 2252 kind of by Garden Ridge, FM 3009. I think as staff has met with folks there, our position has been, we can appreciate the problem. We're certainly willing to work with you on a regional basis. However, we are not, staff is not in support of pushing for a truck route or even encouraging businesses to alter their traffic pattern until we understand the implications. Essentially, we need to do a traffic study to say, if this were done, where do all those trucks go? And likely, what it would do is push a lot more truck traffic through the city of Shirts on roads that are not, don't have capacity to accommodate it, particularly sending them down by where 482 comes into spur of 2252, where Fire Station 2 is, potentially creating some traffic issue there. So essentially, the resolution before you was simply to get council's concurrence with that so that it wasn't saying, staff, our position is this. Don't know what council thinks. It was to be able to say, our council concerns. We want to work regionally with you. We want to support funding solutions to problems. However, until we have data, we are not in favor of pushing to alter the current traffic patterns until we understand those implications. And we think that helps us. In particular, the last meeting we had, staff went to with Tech dot, folks from the Alamo Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. There were, we found that their invitation sent to state reps and state senators' offices as well as school board members and things like that. And so before this effort grew too far, we wanted to get that concurrence with council. So again, feel like the resolution reflects that we want to work collaboratively with folks. We just need to do it in a thoughtful way going forward. I will point out, there was a typo in the resolution in the packet. A corrected version is sent to the city secretary and that would be what would be signed. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. James. Just for clarity, our city's position is not in favor of rerouting, in favor of this resolution.
It's in favor of this resolution. I want to be clear. Until we have data to understand the implications, we are not in favor of any changes or promoting changes to truck traffic.
So if the council votes in favor of this resolution, then?
It lets us say, Shirts is not in favor of changing traffic patterns at this time.
At this time?
Right.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's clear. Now, before we go in, I open it up for the rest of the council here. How many residents live on 2252 in Garden Ridge that they brought this up to our attention?
So it was not residents necessarily who live on Garden Ridge. It was a councilperson in Garden Ridge who brought it up. Again, as we understand it, it does not necessarily have the support of the Garden Ridge council. I don't think their council has taken it up. So we have not heard from residents, per se. Again, let me be clear. We don't disagree that we have challenges with truck traffic throughout the area. But again, as you often hear, those are businesses in the community. They employ folks in the community. They provide a resource that we need in terms of concrete, asphalt, things like that that we rely on for our projects. And so we need to really, I think Shirts's position has always been, how do we then work with folks to find appropriate solutions, to seek funding for things that we need and have everyone to contribute? We tend to have what I would say is a very collaborative approach to dealing with problems. And that includes working with other communities about how we manage our regional traffic. And so we're simply saying here, well, some may feel this solves their immediate problem. We think it would create problems for us and that doesn't seem the right way to approach it.
All right. Council. Councilmember Davis.
Do we anticipate any problems with getting either AMPO or Tech dot to do some updated studies in that area with regards to traffic in general as well as heavy-duty freight traffic?
Right. So what AMPO has indicated or the representative from AMPO indicated, and again, they have a board as well they have to go to for these things, is that they are in process of doing sort of a regional freight study. This area had not been included in it, but they seem fairly confident that if they went back, given the status of that, they could get this included in that regional freight study. Would give us some information. Tech dot's certainly been a good partner for us. They were a partner in this meeting. But again, didn't commit at this point to doing a study. Often, there's a match required. Again, it would seem also that the communities affected would kick in. And so I think Shirts has continued to promote. We have contributed our match money for projects and studies and things like that, 15181103, where we can. You know, we, again, as you may know, even things like where on 78 with the batch plant, we had a spill of some concrete. We sent our streets. We were out there to get it before it hardened. So we are good partners with them. They have not committed to doing it yet. These are very preliminary stages where I think everybody's trying to understand the issue and things like that going forward. So AMPO has said they think they can get it included. Tech dot hasn't committed yet but weren't pressed particularly for that, per se.
No other comments? You know, you know, I just, I'm not in favor of all the traffic coming through our city streets. I mean, if they need to go to 1604, they're going to have to come down 2252, head I-35 and go all the way around to FM 1604. Or even if they can't just go straight through, through Nakadoshus and hit this 1604. All the traffic will be routed through our city. It would, you know, I sympathize with what they're trying to do, but then again, it puts a burden on our city.
And that's really what staff's position had been. And so again, I think part of what we would look for is a more collaborative approach, right? So we have these businesses, they employ people. They provide a good that we need in our community. They probably struggle just as much with transportation issues and slow traffic and things like that. I know John Nowak, who speaks for you a lot, he's looked at this issue of how could we find an appropriate route? And then part of it is, if you find a better solution, how do we fund that and do that and have it in place so that we can create a win-win situation? As opposed to, again, to be blunt, solving one community's problem at the expense of another. I don't know that that's necessarily the intent here. Just want to make sure that folks are aware of that and think it through. And so it would help staff to have that backing of council.
Okay. No other questions? Do we have motion to approve resolution number 25R006?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion made by Councilmember Watson, second by Councilmember Hayward. Any other comments? And we'll start with Councilmember Watson.
Aye.
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 We have six ayes, no objections. Motion passes. Right. We'll move on to item number five, resolution number 25R005, approving the utility service extension request for women hollering townhomes. Ms. Woodley.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Kathy Woodley, city engineer. This is kind of a new item. It's a new process, new rule. So trying to give a little bit of background about it. In the past, it was fairly common practice that if a property was to be developed in the ETJ and they wanted to tie on to city utilities, water or wastewater, we would say, that's fine. You can annex into the city and then we'll be happy to serve you. However, that rule changed with the state and we did, you all adopted an ordinance last year to change that up and basically say, well, right, we can't force you to annex if you're already in our CCN. We're obligated to serve. But we need to check into this, make sure that there's a mechanism to go through the process, make sure that it's an appropriate service or extension of service. And city council will have the authority to grant the approval of that extension request. So this property is approximately 30 acres. It is in the ETJ, in that kind of donut hole area. There's Woman Hollering Road and then there's some tracks close by to that. This is about 30 acres and a developer is proposing a multifamily or townhome development. It's, the project is currently titled, Woman Hollering Townhomes. There's not specifically a plan for it at this point, but the city doesn't have zoning authority. The city doesn't have platting authority over it, but they would like to tie on to our water and wastewater. So we did go through a fairly extensive discussion about capacities and tie-in locations and that sort of thing. And they do meet all the criteria that's set forth in the new ordinance. So we are recommending that you approve the service extension request. And I'm happy to answer any other questions since this is kind of a new situation that you haven't heard similar requests before of.
Regarding capacity.
Yes.
Granting them capacity, would that offset some of the other developments that we have that are in the city limits?
So this is why this took quite a while back and forth with the developer to determine if there is capacity. We did look at the whole sewer shed that would tie into the same location where this is tying into to ensure that there is still capacity for the sewer shed within the city limits to tie in. The one caveat being, we can't predict with 100% accuracy what will potentially develop in the future within the city limits. If 12 projects came in and they were all multifamily projects, there may need to be an upsize in the future at the time for whatever development might come in. But that being said, currently looking at potential zoning based on the current land use plan, there is capacity for the area that's in the city limits.
Currently, there is capacity.
Currently, yes.
You know,
we do hold the CCNs for those areas, so we are obligated to serve.
Yeah. That's, this is a state mandate that just makes it very difficult for us not to say no when in fact, we're, the state has basically put the obligation on us to say yes. Although they're still paying for the utilities and the processing and all that, they are not going to pay any city property tax at all.
That's correct, Mayor. And maybe one point of clarification I want to add and see if Kathy, you agree or I misspeak is, when we talk about capacity, we use the term differently. When the city staff thinks, do we have capacity? It's can we accommodate your flows and get them to where they need to go to be treated? And we can, but as with all development, they often have to construct public improvements. The issue here was what route they went to get into the line that they needed to get into to be treated was really the issue that took a while. I want to be clear, not that we don't, in the sense we mean they have capacity, it's just route they have to go to get there. Maybe to clarify. Is that fair?
So to a certain extent, that would have been, there's a preferred route for them to take that would free up additional capacity that would provide more of a buffer for us for the future.
In particular lines.
In a segment of line, yes.
Yes.
That's correct.
So to be clear, I think really in this case, we're talking about capacity in a line, the route to get there, not the large, broader sense of capacity.
Overall capacity in our system.
Is that fair?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. In other words, you're saying, "We have no option." But if we say no to this resolution, what implications are there? I mean, because you're basically saying, "We have to say yes." But this council could say no on this resolution.
Yeah, you can, you can say no on the resolution. They'll petition to be released from your CCN. I mean, or, you know, you could, the PUC could, you know, reach out to you and say, "Hey, this is in your CCN, you're obligated to serve." I mean, that's, that's what it comes down to, because right now, they are in your CCN.
Well, we can send a message by saying no, because we're going to have all these other developers on our, on our.
So the caveat, I think, Mayor, I appreciate the frustration, and don't get me wrong, staff shares this frustration.
Oh, I know.
What we do all the time. As Dan said, you know, in theory, they petitioned to be released, and then who knows what they do to start accommodating their sewage? And that's not as good a solution as having them tie into our system, to be blunt. I think that's part of the concern, is that be careful what you wish for, because who knows what they do, what route they go, again, what issues we create with the PUC saying, "What do you mean, you guys don't have capacity for the areas within your CCN? Does that trickle out and create issues further out?" And so, again, I share the frustration, which, if I may, I believe we have with the state for changing the annexation laws and saying, "Cities, you have to deal with all the implications of this development, such as traffic and fires that may occur and all the things that go with it and accommodate sewer and whatnot." And yet, you can't annex to share that full tax burden with them. Again, these folks will probably come to city parks and use city parks, but they're not helping pay for that. We agree with that frustration. If there were a better way to do this, we would recommend it, but we would certainly not suggest you not offer service, because as Dan said, it would become an issue where they could petition to be released, and then it may be a much worse situation. And we still have all those implications, right? You know, at this point, they certainly would, if we are providing service, they would have to pay their sewer bill. In that way, help support our system. And so, they don't get a free ride.
No, no.
Just don't.
They don't pay city taxes.
And Dan, just to clarify, Dan, if they did not petition to be released from our CCN, we would still hold the obligation to provide service.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's what comes with it, right? You get, you have the right to provide service, but then you also have the obligation to provide service, right? And so, we don't want to give up that obligation, because then we lose the right to provide service and it's, be careful what you wish for. But I, we, don't get me wrong.
Oh.
We appreciate the frustration. We've had time to simmer on it and stew on it and vent on it.
I totally agree with what you're saying.
Yep.
It's just that the state legislates, it puts the burden on the cities with ETJs and, yeah, the annexation, all those things that are trying to.
We agree with you entirely, and we've vented and stewed and been frustrated by that.
I'll open it up to council for questions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hayward?
Yeah, I, I, I get it, it's a lose-lose, but I just can't see supporting this. I mean, this is the same thing we talked about before when we were going through all the delayed annexation agreements and everything else, and now we've got a property owner that wants to do stuff that is putting a burden on our city. I understand it's just regarding the waste connection, but, but like you said, they're putting a burden on the city. They're going to be using all kinds of city resources and not pay property taxes like the 43,000 other people do in this city to get police, fire, EMS and everything else, you know? So we're going to be on the hook for this. They're going to add, they're going to add these facilities, they're going to add these buildings, and just basically, they're thumbing their nose to the city of shirts. I mean, me, I personally, I think it's worth pushing the test button. And if they want to fight it, then they can fight it. They want to try to get released, whatever, I don't care. But to sit there and go to a community and say, "We want all of these services, but all the, but we just don't want to do anything else," it's, I have a problem with it myself.
Understood. And again, maybe just not disagreeing with you, but one thing to keep in mind, while we tend to think of our city limit boundaries coinciding with our CCN boundaries, they, they don't. And, and so, in this case, I think it's an area that's surrounded by the city, as opposed to on the edge of the commu, as opposed to the edge of the city. But I certainly understand that, but just to understand that this is not the only area that we're going to have this issue.
I understand, I understand. But again, there's, when you're looking at CCN boundaries, that covers a big area. I mean, we've got folks in the city of shirts that are covered by CCMA, that are covered by NBU, with the same problem with electric utilities. I mean, I get all those boundaries.
Okay.
But again, this, this is a property that is not on the edge that, you know, the one side of the street's got NBU, the other side of the street, and one development's got GVEC. This is a, a piece of property that, on the northeast, south and west, is surrounded by the city of shirts. And over the course of the years, we have gone through this annexation process to bring all these other parcels in. And this is, this is one property owner that wants to stay in no man's land and not be a part of the city of shirts, but wants all the benefits from the city of shirts. Again, I got a problem with that.
Understood. And just to be clear on a couple of things, and that's just going to change your mind. When 10, 12 years ago, we did not do delayed annexation agreement with this property. So this wasn't one we initially entered into, this is one we chose to not enter into along with all of the other properties off Woman Hollering Creek Road. Now, that being said, the property owner did come in and they petitioned to annex and came before you for annexation and zoning, and I'll have to look to Emily to chime in as to how far that made it, but it did not look like it was going well for them on the zoning, and that was when they pulled it. But I don't know that the zoning was denied per se. I think, I think it never made it, so not one way or the other.
I am familiar with the, with the property now that you mentioned it.
Yeah, that's the, that's the property.
Yeah. You know, and Councilmember Davis is absolutely right. We've got to provide EMS services. We have to provide fire. The protection is by the sheriff's department, but, but still, it does put a burden on our city. And I think this message, if the council votes no, it's sending a message to other developers that are trying to do the similar thing, that we're not going to just stand back and just say yes to everything. And I think it's a good point that, to let this council decide that this is not a good option for us, and let them push the boundaries. Let them come and let the process take over. And not just let it slide through our city council. Councilmember Brown?
I'm a little bit concerned about the impact on the city, though. I mean, what's the cost going to be? What's the time consumption of the staff, the legal side and everything else? You know, how much are we going to be consumed on that to fight a losing battle with the state? You know? Do you have any input there, Dan?
Sure, no, I have no idea what, what that would, that would cost you, having to contest this, if we have to go to the PUC or something like that. To be fair to the developer, they don't have an option but to come to you for service, because they're in your CCN. So they don't have another option to go to for service at this moment. So, you know, and because they're in your CCN, they don't have to be in your city limits, so they had the right not to seek to be annexed. So if this is an issue for the council, then really, we need to be looking at everywhere else your CCN goes outside your boundaries, because if that's not something that you want to be part of, we need to know that. The other thing I would remind the council is that, you know, we settled a case with Green Valley and took in additional CCN and gave up CCN to them, and I don't know how much of that is all within your city at this moment or not within your city at this moment either. And so, I don't want to jeopardize. I don't, I don't know that this was part of any of that.
It wasn't.
But there's other portions that are down in this area that I know were, so.
And that was a lot of time over, a lot, a long time, and a lot of money that was spent on that as well, so. Yeah, like I said, I just hate to see us get caught up in something in a legal battle that's going to cost us time and money to make a point.
And if I may, certainly what council could do is not act on this item at this meeting, not make a decision one way or the other, and have staff go back and try to more fully flesh out what the implications would be. Now, again, you may feel pretty solid where you are, but we could certainly do that. If you'd like, is push this back a meeting and have staff come back with a more complete estimate of what we think might be the implications of that and how they might get service and things like that, if that would be helpful.
I may ask, you know, is there a way to price it so that they're not, you know, CCN access or connection access to all of these things outside of city limits have a pricing differential or something there that'll help make up for some of that? I don't know.
I think the rates are different.
The rate, there's a different rate already, and that's what we've done and would continue to do.
Is the rate set by the city council?
It is.
We can actually have a higher rate if we were, yeah. Never mind, we'll just move on. Councilmember Hayward?
I have to agree with Councilmember Brown, because if I remember correctly, with settling with GV Sud, and I was part of that mediation thing, that went, that was a lot of money and a lot of time. And to me, I'm like, the state took our ability away, pretty much, because they're in the CCN with the new law. And so, my question would become, even if we said no, the implications of, and we still lose, so is it worth sending a message knowing we're still going to lose because the PUC could come back and go, "Ah, ah, ah, you still have to do this." And then the other question I would have is, and I don't think that they could do that, because I don't quite understand them fully, but could they go in and then try to create a mud?
I mean, I think, I think that's what staff wants to fully sort of understand, right? Because I think what the property owner would likely do is go to the PUC and say, "Look, I'm in the city of shirts." At whatever point in time, they chose to bring this area in their CCN. At the time, we weren't in the city limits, they knew that, they know how things work, whether state law changed or not, right? So they chose to say, "We will take on the responsibility to provide service. We're the only one that can, and we have to do it." And they've changed their mind. And so then, again, this is where, what are the implications? Is it a mud? Is it the property owner going to the PUC going, "Look, it's not viable for you just to let us go to somebody else because the cost of getting there. You need to take this whole big swath, give that over to Green Valley, whomever, or mud or whatever it is." And I think that's where, again, if you'd like us to explore and understand the implications of what might happen, we're certainly happy to. But I certainly understand, it may, yeah.
Because with a mud, you have, we still, you lose control, and then they can be, you know, talking with some people who have muds. They, once they're in, they're in, and there's no getting out of that.
Well, a mud would just be a financing mechanism.
Right. For them to do infrastructure out there. So could they then go to the PUC and say, "We want to create a mud," and then they have to pay financing to do the infrastructure?
I suppose they could petition to be outside of the.
The CCN or?
Release from our CCN, inform their own or just create their own mud district. It's kind of too small for that. I mean, I don't.
That's what I was.
I know that they could make it work financially.
Okay. Because I, I'm just, like I said, since we don't do that, I have a little bit of knowledge on a mud, so that's why I asked the question.
And I think to Steve's point, that's where we'd be concerned, that they're arguing, "Hey, this is too small to do a mud," right? It's just our property, thus to make it viable, we need to really look more largely if shirts is not going to provide service. But again, I'm not trying to scare, we'd have to go back and really spend some time and understand what the most viable implications of this are.
What time, what kind of time constraints do we have here?
You know, I certainly don't think there's a problem to delay it to the next meeting, see how far we get. Again, if we need one more, we're probably okay with that. So my thought would be is that, that's right, you want to go, push to the next meeting, see if we can come up.
I would think so. You know, the Northeast Partnership has also dealt with this issue, and we have spoke to our state representatives and state senators regarding the losing control of some of the, some of the issues, and this is one of them.
Yep.
So they will give us time so that we can get, you know, get their attention to reverse some of those issues that they, those mandates they put on us.
Yes, sir.
I do recommend that we postpone this. Do I have a consensus from council to postpone it?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to table it until our next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Davis to table it, and second by Councilmember Watson. Any other comments? We'll go ahead and start with the vote. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
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 We have six ayes, we'll table it, and if you can bring it up to our next meeting. Thank you. All right, we have public hearings. First is item number six, Ordinance Number 25S-002. Conduct a public hearing and consider a request to rezone approximately 85 acres of land from agricultural district to approximately 30 acres as single-family residential district R6, and approximately 55 acres of single-family residential R2s located 2,000 feet north of the intersection of Weir Road and Trainer Hill Road, more specifically known as Bear County Property Identification Numbers 310048 and 1190132, City of Shirts, Bear County, Texas. Ms. Marcus, floor is yours, the time, okay, your floor is yours.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Mr. Williams. Ordinance 25S-002, proposed zone change to R2 and R6 along Weir Road, Daisy Marquez, planner. Here's the subject property outlined in yellow. It is located along Weir Road. I-10 is further down south, and this is that bend where that road turns into Trainer Hill. The subject property is 85 acres. It's currently undeveloped, and it may look familiar because it was part of the recent annexations that happened. To the north of the property, there's a large parcel zoned pre-development district. Over here, to the left, we have the Sterling Grove PDD that is still undeveloped. And then to the right, we have Weir Road and other properties that are still within the ETJ. And to the south, we have a property that still has agricultural uses and is zoned AD. So we sent out 11 public notices in November, and we received three in favor and one in opposition. And a public hearing notice was published in the San Antonio Express, and two signs were placed along Weir Road by the applicant. So kind of just showing you how the applicant is proposing a breakdown of this property. So they are proposing 54 acres as R2, as seen here, and 30 acres as R6. And again, that 30 acres is because the maximum allowed size for a tract of R6 is 30 acres. And here is the existing AD zoning compared to what is being proposed. Again, some of the major differences are the width and depth for each required zoning district. So the existing AD requires 100 by 100 lots and half acres, whereas the R2 are 70 by 120 lots with 8,400 square feet, and then R6 is 60 by 120 with 7,200 square feet. So when staff evaluates zone changes, we look to UDC Section 21511D for the criteria of approval. One, whether the proposed zone change implements the policies of the Comprehensive Land Plan. So the Comprehensive Land Plan has this subject parcel designated as complete neighborhood, and complete neighborhood is intended for a mix of residential uses, accompanying commercial neighborhood type of uses, but when it comes to looking at when people are proposing zone changes, to looking at the roads, if the roads can handle that capacity, compatible land uses, and looking what's already existing in the surrounding area. So staff sees the proposed R6 and R2 within the same development as compatible with the Comprehensive Land Plan. So two, as part of promoting health, safety and welfare, the city should encourage development compatible with the surrounding uses and utilizing standards and transitional uses. So staff sees the R6 and R2 as acting as a transitional use to the existing undeveloped agricultural land in the surrounding area, and it would kind of be one of the first proposed developments in that area. So three, the proposed R2 and R6 are appropriate in this immediate area. Again, the maximum tract that an R6 tract can be is 30 acres, and we see it as appropriate because R6 and R2 are intended for detached, single-family homes, kind of just starting to create that neighborhood unit in that area. So it'd be, again, the first in that area along Weir Road and Trainer Hill that would be starting to be developed if approved. And just to show you a comparison of the Sterling Grove PDD that's to the west of the property, the Sterling Grove PDD stipulates 55 by 120 lots and 65 by 110, sorry, lots. And the zoning that the applicant is proposing tonight is R2, which is 70 by 120 lots and 60 by 120 lots of the R6. So we see, we do see it as being consistent with the Sterling Grove PDD and a transitional use to the agriculture that's still there in the surrounding area. So the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council have not provided any additional criteria for the proposed zone change. And the proposed zone change meets the intent of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Future Land Use Map, and is seen as appropriate with the existing uses in the media area. So staff recommends approval of Ordinance 25S-002. And the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing for this item on December 4th and made a recommendation of approval to City Council with a unanimous vote. And the applicant is here if you have any specific questions.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus. All right. Would the applicant like to address the council?
I thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate you all taking the time tonight and allowing me to speak. I'm the applicant. My name's Shad Schmidt with Kingfish Development. And as Daisy said, pretty much everything, which I'd like to add to it. The zoning requests that we are making are in compliance with the City of Shirts's Comprehensive Land Plan and FLUM or Future Land Use Map, and it's compatible with the uses that are around the Sterling Grove PDD, et cetera. And so, we request, you know, approval of the zoning change. If you have any questions for me, I also brought my engineer in case you have something a little more technical that's outside of my wheelhouse. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. All right. All right, this is a public hearing. The time is 7:08. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the city council in reference to this subject? You are limited to three minutes. Anyone would like to address the council? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is closed at 7:09. All right, council, floor is open for discussion.
I make a motion that we approve, Ordinance 25S-002.
Second.
Have motion made by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Watson. Any other comments? None. Council, we'll start with Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
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 We have six ayes, no objection, motion passes. We'll move on to item number seven, Ordinance Number 25S-001. Conduct a public hearing and consider a request to rezone approximately 26 acres of land from single-family residential R2 to single-family residential district R6, known as a portion of Walupac County Property Identification Number 64640, located 78 feet south of the intersection of Savannah Drive and Irish Creek Road, City of Shirts, Walupac County, Texas. Ms. Marcus, floor is yours.
Good evening, once again. Ordinance 25S-001, a proposed zone change to R6 located on Savannah Drive and Irish Creek Road. Road, Daisy Marquez, planner. Here's the subject property outlined in yellow. It is located along Savannah Drive. This is the Irish Creek Road intersection. Up north, we have the Kensington Ranch PDD all the way to the east. It would be the Shirts Parkway-Savannah Drive intersection. We have a parcel that's part of the City of Shirts that is drainage but is zoned R2, and then further out east, we have the Ashley Place subdivision that's zoned R6. And then to the south, we have undeveloped property that's zoned R2. And then over here to the west is the remainder of that subject parcel that is not part of the zone change tonight, but it is zoned R2. And then we get into Universal City City Limits that has that Orchard Park development. So we sent out 22 public notices in November, and we received one in favor and 19 in opposition. And again, a notice was published in the San Antonio Express, and two signs were placed by the applicant. So the proposed change must receive, in order to take effect, the affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of all members of the City Council, according to LGC Local Government Code 211.006D, since we did receive 20.13% opposition. So an affirmative action is required tonight. So some background of the property, all of property identification number 64640 is being proposed to be developed, but only the 26 acres to, outside of the APZ2, is being affected by the zone change, is being proposed as part of this zone change. So again, here is that existing R2 dimensional table next to the proposed R6 dimensional table, and again, the major differences are the width requirements and the square footage requirements for these two zoning districts. R2 requires 70 by 120, whereas R6 requires 60 by 120 lots minimum, and it's a 1,200 square foot difference of 8,400 square feet for the existing R2 and 7,200 square feet for the proposed R6. So here is a conceptual master land plan that the applicant submitted with their application. This large 26-acre parcel to the right is what is, why we're here tonight. And this property does look familiar because in March it came to PNZ and in April went to council for a proposed PDD application, and part of that PDD, they were only proposing residential development outside of the APZ2 within those 26 acres, and they were restricting and not allowing residential development within the APZ2. And staff saw that creation of the PDD to prevent development of residents within the APZ2 to be a community benefit. But tonight, the applicant is proposing R6, and they're only proposing to rezone the 26 acres outside of the APZ2 to a higher density, and staff does not see this as a community benefit as it excludes that remaining acreage within the APZ2, which contributes to staff's recommendation of denial. So again, staff looks towards UDC Section 21511D for the criteria of approval. One, this property is designated as complete neighborhood, and again, complete neighborhood is intended for a mixture of housing options with different supporting land uses. And again, this can be things like commercial that is appropriate for neighborhoods, schools, and things like that, but also when considering zone changes and looking at their appropriateness, we must consider roadways and if they can handle the traffic, also looking at the conflicts among land uses and what's existing in the area. So staff does believe that single-family residences do meet the intent of complete neighborhood, but within the immediate area and looking at this subject parcel, R6 does not implement or meet the intent of complete neighborhood within this area, and I'll go further in the next slide. And we believe that the existing R2 does implement the complete neighborhood land use designation at this parcel because it's promoting that mixture of housing and that transition from the smaller lots to bigger lots that complete neighborhood is intending to do with the mixture of housing options. And to kind of go further into what's existing in the area, to the north, we have the Kensington Ranch Estates PDD that essentially is R6 with all of the parcels outside of the APZ being 60 by 120. And then over here to the right, Ashley Place, those are also straight zoned R6 with 60 by 120. And then when looking at the Orchard Park Development that's inside Universal City, those lots are approximately 6,000 square feet with 50 by 120. So again, you can see how staff is saying that the proposed R6 wouldn't really be implementing that mix of housing options just because this is the existing R2 and the R6 is already surrounding that community and that parcel. So two, when considering, again, the surrounding uses in the comp plan, the existing R2 better promotes, promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the city. Again, we have heard a lot of concerns and complaints about the existing traffic concerns on Savannah, and here you can see, again, that Shirts Parkway and Savannah Drive intersection where the school is, the intersection of Irish Creek and Savannah that residents have concerned about, and then that intersection of Savannah and FM 1518. So the existing R2 is more compatible and appropriate with existing uses as it promotes that mixture of housing options. It is existing R2 within that area, and it provides a different dimension of lot sizes. And four, previous zoning discussions at City Council have established a policy that if a zone change doesn't result in a better development than what could potentially develop, then the proposed zone change would not be desired. And we also have received significant opposition by residents due to the higher density, again, the site visibility concerns along Savannah, the existing traffic concerns on Savannah, and what could possibly be increased along Savannah with higher density. And staff, just want to note that we did receive a published article from the Community Impact News and a Universal City Council agenda by a resident that was concerned about the development that shows this as part of a larger conceptual development. So staff has not received any other formal applications within the City of Shirts other than this 26-acre rezone that you have in front of you tonight. So this is the only formal application we have at this time, and that conceptual plan that was sent to us does not impact staff's opinion and recommendation of denial for ordinance 25S001. And again, staff is recommending denial of ordinance 25S001, and the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on December 4th, and they made a recommendation of approval to the City Council with a 4-2 vote. And the applicant is here as well.
Whether we can have the applicant?
Good evening, council people. Patrick Christensen, 315 East Commerce, San Antonio, Texas. You've seen me here a few times before. I was here for the previous rezoning of this property. I had a gas station case that didn't go too well. I'd like to go back to my, this exhibit. So as Daisy said, basically what we're trying to do is we're leaving what's in the APZ, what it's zoned today. We're asking for rezoning of 26 acres to the east of that. You know, and the purpose behind that is, you know, because we can develop this tomorrow, just rack them and stack them, R2 lots. We ask for the R6 because it allows us to have more open space, more green space. You see the detention area, that can be a lot smaller, we can probably even get rid of it and just put houses over there. It's just an old water tank for the polo fields that were there. So that's why we're coming to you today. When Meritage Homes, who's the, basically, excuse me, the developer, when they came to me, and I looked at this, I said, well, staff recommended approval of the rental housing apartments and sort of townhome uses that came to you back in April, as staff mentioned. So I looked at this and I said, well, okay, we're not rezoning anything or asking for higher density in the APZ. That should be good. We should be good to go. But then we get staff's recommendation before PNZ, and basically, it's just a, how in the world do we come up with a way to basically require the developer to not develop anything in the APZ? And then maybe we'll give them higher density on what's outside the APZ. Whereas what we're doing is just saying, look, we'll leave the APZ the way it is, the zoning that the city gave to it previously, and we'll just ask for a little bit of extra density outside of that area. And if you look at some of the other slides that staff has, this one, the APZ is full of houses. Now, we're not trying to rack them and stack them like they do in Universal City, but the R6 we're asking for is basically exactly the same as Kensington Ranch has. And so when staff says they want, you know, complete cities and complete developments, how is this any different than the case you just heard? We've got R2, we're asking for some R6. It's exactly the same. And, you know, at the PNZ, there were some members of Kensington Ranch that were in opposition. Before I even filed the case, I reached out to John Clark, who used to be on the board, he might not be on the board anymore. He said, you know, his, their concern was on Savannah Drive, you know, in the morning when you're taking your kids to school, it's very difficult for them to make a left-hand turn outside of their subdivision. So we proposed at the PNZ, and we still propose today, to ask staff if they will allow us to do a stop sign there if we have access to that street. I think that would alleviate a lot of the safety concerns out there that will allow them to make left-hand turns out of their subdivision in the morning. So if staff will allow us, we will pay for that and we will do that. So that's basically what we're asking for, is just to have a little bit of extra density so we can have a little bit more open space, and we're just leaving the APZ the way it is. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is on the agenda as an open public hearing, and the time is 7:21. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the City Council in reference to this subject? Going once. Going twice. All right, public hearing is closed. All right. And the time is 7:21. Before we get started, I do have some questions for staff here. You indicated there is significant opposition to it, and I was looking over my notes. On the first public hearing back in April, we had, looking here, let's see, we had 65 public notices mailed out and 543 in opposition. That is significant, okay? And I'm not, no, please bear with me. I want to make sure you understand where I'm coming from in this situation. I thank you for your hard work and thorough analysis of this, and my questions are not meant to challenge your ability, just bring out some of the inconsistencies that I found, and I don't want to make you feel uncomfortable in this. But that is significant. When you have 543 oppositions, you send out 19 notices, no, 22 notices and 19 in opposition, that is not very significant compared to the 543. But it's still met the threshold. I'm just talking about numbers here.
So fair enough, Mayor. I apologize if we incorrectly used the term. I think we're trying to make sure we're clear with council on this. There was enough opposition to trigger the supermajority. So again, we'll look at the term we use. I apologize. It's certainly subjective, and so we'll try to stay away from subjective terms either way going forward and simply list the quantifiable numbers.
No, that's just one of the numbers.
We can do that going forward in the future.
And then when we look at the hearing of residents back in April, we had 17 individuals that came up to speak during the hearing of residents, and we also had individuals from North Cliff having their opposition. We had one today. We had a public hearing, and we had 26 people came out here and expressed their concerns in opposition to it. Right now, we have zero. No one showed up for this public hearing.
Don't disagree with me, Mayor. Certainly, staff can better gauge our recommendations based on the number of residents that come out in opposition or support of cases. I certainly appreciate that.
My other point is that back in April, this same piece of land was 32 acres. Why is it 26 now? Where do we lose six?
Sure. So I think what happened is, again, previously what the applicant had proposed, as Daisy indicated, is they brought this property in and the property to the west end that's in the APZ. And what they've done this time is they've excluded that property in the APZ, right, and just brought this in. Now, part of that is probably because of the fact that unless, the City of Shirts's UDC states that unless we get an affirmative letter of support from JBSA for a rezoning within the APZ, that council cannot approve it. And I don't know that, again, it's only speculation, maybe I shouldn't do that because that goes back to subjective terms. So the applicant chose, for whatever reason, to exclude that portion of the property, and that's why the acreage was reduced.
But the total property is 42 acres.
That they own?
That the whole concept is 42 acres. And if you remove the APZ zone like you did last time, that was 32 acres.
So I may be misunderstanding then. So you're saying, did we err then on the notice of the size of your property that is being rezoned? Because if so, we need to restart it. If it's 42 acres, not 26, then we have a notification error.
It was 32 acres back in April. It's 26 acres today.
Right. And again, Mayor, I apologize, what they, last time they included this in the rezoning request?
But that was a total acreage.
That's right.
Right.
And so they've excluded it this time, so it's...
It was excluded last time, too, because the whole concept was on 32 acres for the multifamily, multi-level complex.
If I may, Mayor, and again, I apologize, you may have looked at it more closely, and I may be incorrect. My recollection was that the prior zoning case included the whole thing, right? And what they were doing as part of that is saying, we aren't going to develop, we're going to change zoning to not develop.
Let's stop there, then. They included the whole area.
Right.
But when they said they weren't touching the APZ zone, which they're not doing at this point either, then the other side of the property was 32 acres. It's not 32 acres this time, it's 26.
I believe, Mayor, that because they carved out the detention pond portion, I think that maybe that's the difference. Is that correct, sir?
Retention's part of the zone.
Okay. It doesn't appear to be part of the map.
Okay, so taking out the retention pond is, we're looking at 6 acres at that portion, but it is part of the rezoning application, am I correct?
No, it is.
Go to the one with the side-by-side.
Bottom, right there, we cut out, just because we can leave that R2.
Okay, you're leaving part of it R2. That's why...
That's why the acreage is...
That's why the acreage is wrong, but because you leave that part of R2, they're saying that you can't rezone unless you have 30 acres. You understand what I'm saying? Leaving it out is causing you the problem to cause this denial because you've got to, you're saying to build R6es, you've got to have 30 acres.
No, no, sir. I think, apologize if we misspoke. What council's direction had been is we don't want to do R6 over more than 30 acres, right? So we don't want a lot of it. They're less than the 30 acres, right? They could have...
Only because they left some of the R2.
Right. But again, I want to be clear, Mayor, I apologize if we, if I provided confusion. The cap on the 30 acres is you can't request more than 30 acres as R6. You can come in and request 5 acres of R6, 10 acres of R6, 20 acres of R6, 26 acres of R6, or 30 acres of R6, and then that potentially we would approve if appropriate because it's less than the 30. If you came in with 50 acres of R6, that's where it'd say, you're bigger than 30, we won't do it. So apologize again if we created confusion there. Yeah, I think, again, to maybe be clear from staff's recommendation, you know, part of where we had, and again, staff tries to understand kind of what council's generally philosophy is, and after we had some challenges on a number of zoning cases that came forward that there were disconnects, staff was requesting approval on, council denied, vice versa, we had that workshop and said, how do we want to look at zoning cases? How do, kind of, do you generally want to look? And it's a rule of thumb, it's not everywhere kind of thing. And I think I used the example of, do we look at a zoning case and say, look, unless we can really demonstrate that this is going to create problems in our community, then go ahead and approve it, right? Let's not worry about it so much, let's not be so nitpicky, let's not, right, sky is falling kind of thing. Or is the philosophy more, look, if you've got zoning that's viable, right, opposed to something that's not, if somebody comes in for a rezone or an SUP, then really that rezoning or SUP should be more compatible, make the community better, be more consistent with the plan. It's just a different philosophy how you sort of look at it. Again, staff got the impression, maybe falsely so, that council said, let's look at this stuff as the latter and say, if somebody's going to come into rezone and it's viable, then really does this make the situation better? And frankly, where we sit is that whole complete neighborhood thing... And, and frankly, where we sit is that whole complete neighborhood thing, we look at, it doesn't necessarily make it better. Now, we may have misunderstood council, we, we may have got this one wrong on it, the answer may be, look, it's only twelve hundred square feet per lot, what, what's the big deal? It's not the end of the world, we're fine with it. And that staff learns from, and we listen and things like that.
Now, the other point, my final point is the traffic. The residents are concerned about the traffic, but isn't traffic mitigated by having two exits on fifteen eighteen with the new, with the total development, because there's going to be an exit to fifteen eighteen from Orchard? Another one with the other development that is, that's part of the overall development, another one at Maskey Road? So there, the traffic can be mitigated by those three exits and not just all the, they, they have the sense that all the traffic's coming to Savannah, but the total, total development will include exits on fifteen eighteen and Maskey.
So you're, you're correct, Mayor. Let me, let me be clear. You're certainly correct that as properties develop around it and roads are created and connections are made, traffic will dissipate out and go for those, and so it would lessen the amount on there. I think, again, we've heard a lot from council about, when you consider zoning cases, look at what's there today and treat that. And so one of the things that we've done with this is that we look at what's proposed today, correct, as opposed to what may be proposed and what may be built and what may be connected. And again, I, I will, I will offer this, if you will. It, it's, it's frankly a nominal amount of lot difference.
Any idea?
My opinion.
How many?
And that's a subjective. I, I can't tell you, because again, there, there are a series of factors, right? As I understood, one of the challenges they had was needing fill dirt on the property, which is why they requested staff approve them to do soil bore tests in Deets Creek to see if potentially they could take some of that silt that's accumulated, which benefits the city, and use it on this property. So we're not trying to jam up development. We gave them authorization to go do bores to say, sure, if, if there's dirt there that you can use and it helps desilt our creek, have at it. So we're trying to work. So I, I don't know the number. It's probably not a number that I would think most residents would notice a difference in traffic on Savannah, whether this developed as R2 or R6. I would argue, based on vehicle trips per hour and whatnot.
Okay. With that all, bending it up, Councilmember Brown?
I, I think, uh, listening and watching the, the P and Z meeting, I think they said somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen home difference.
That's probably about right. Yeah, it's not a huge number, subjectively language.
Councilmember Hayward?
No.
Oh, Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I'm, if, if I'm correct, this is just one piece of a bigger puzzle, correct?
That's, as we understand it, yes, sir.
And I'm, I'm, I'm personally not a big fan of the, the piecemeal sleight-of-hand development process. When we know there's going to be more by the same person, but we're only getting a peak under the tent, under the curtain, so, um, that's my, my baseline perspective on this. So if you go back to the one where it shows the APZ and the city boundary, that one right there, the parcel that we're talking about right now, that, am I correct in, in assuming that everything in orange is R2?
That's correct.
Um, and the, and the piece that we're talking about right now is just the three-sided yellow and blue section.
That's correct.
Where we're going to keep part of it as R2, and then part of it is R6.
Well, except that the cutout, the notch out here.
So everything in the yellow section will be R6?
That's correct, except this little notch out.
And the section between the blue and the red city boundary line will be R2?
That's correct.
Uh, and I'm guessing at some point, uh, down where we have the GB2, and that will probably develop by somebody somewhere.
So that's part of their larger proposal. And again, I think staff was hesitant to sort of say this, because we haven't, as Daisy said, we kind of understand there's this plan, they've certainly shared it with us, they've certainly shared it with the Universal City, and so the plan calls for this to be residential. Um, and, and again, I believe they got a, they requested an initial review from JBSA, and that came back.
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify, Councilman Davis, I mean, we don't, what, what's in yellow, this, this area that we're kind of talking about tonight, the forty-four acres? We have that under contract. So this other stuff, we, we've, we've talked to the owners, we've talked about buying, we don't have...
Understand.
We're not trying to come in piecemealing you.
I, I understand. I, I know there's a lot of moving parts on that. I just want to make sure I'm looking at...
Yes, sir.
The big picture, because, because from my perspective, looking at this one piece now is a piece that's going to add on to other things potentially later. And, and I'm, I'm concerned about the impact long-term, not just right now. So, I mean, to me, this is a significant difference between the last proposal we had with the multifamily and everything else. I, and, and, and it's, it seems more reasonable with the surrounding area. But from my days on TSAC and my other personal experience, and I, I tend to drive this road every now and then, I do have concerns about that portion of Savannah. With right now, you've got all the Kensington Ranch to the north of it, we're going to be adding more to the south of Savannah now, uh, and we're going to have, as it's laid out now, if you go back a couple slides, I guess it was, uh, with, with what we have now, not considering the future vision of the southern side, may have a road that connects to Maskey, or there may be another connection through Orchard Park. This, that one, go back that slide you just had.
The one before.
That's all we have now, which means for everything that they're proposing, there is one way in and one way out.
Uh, that's incorrect, because Orchard Park's already developed. That frame does not show Orchard Park connecting to that street, am I correct?
Right, because this...
So there is, there's two.
So, so the applicant, again, has been very clear.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at it on Google Earth now.
That's already developed, that portion's developed, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm looking at it on Google Earth now. So there is a connection to the west through Orchard Park.
That's correct.
Um, my, my biggest hangup is, is Savannah. Um, and if I'm not mistaken, there's like next to no, there are no traffic signals other than the one at fifteen eighteen in Savannah. Um, and I don't recall any stop signs along Savannah from fifteen eighteen until you get up to Shirts Parkway. Uh, is it, would it be reasonable to, to make that intersection a, a four-way stop?
So what I would say is, and having been on TSAC, you understand this, so what the applicant would do is the applicant would do a TIA, a traffic impact analysis, and they would look in particular at that intersection, whether or not it meets the warrants for that and what the factors are. And certainly, and I'm not to speak for the engineering department, and ultimately it goes to TSAC and city council, is if it meets the warrants to have a four-way stop, then I don't know why we wouldn't recommend approval of it, but I, I can't say that it does. It, it's beyond just, we all want to put one in.
No, I, I get it. I mean, and again, my time on TSAC, I, I, I fully get that, considering the like six or seven stop signs we have on Savannah on the other side of Shirts Parkway, looking at the volume of houses here, I don't see any way how this would not warrant a four-way stop.
So the only caveat I might say, Councilman, is don't assume that those stop signs on other streets in fact meet the warrants.
Were done properly. No, I, I get that. But when I look at the volume of houses to the north and the volume of houses that they're proposing to the south...
I don't disagree that at some point, if all this develops as a larger vision, that you probably hit the warrants.
And at the end of the day, this whole property is currently zoned R2.
That's correct. And certainly can develop as R2. Perfectly fine, we think that's consistent with the comp plan to develop as R2.
Uh, this is not a, a gated community, correct?
Uh, they have not come, well, they're not at the plating stage, and that's where that would occur. They've, they've not indicated the plan is for it to be gated.
And, and their, their current plan is, is as presented, I'm still in Google Earth, let me get out of this for a minute. Uh, their current plan is to retain the detention pond?
So they did not include that as part of the zoning, but again, we've had this back and forth, and staff is always unders, trying to understand direction from council. This is not a PDD, this graphic is not locked in, so...
So...
Again, as we understood it from talking to the developer, the issue here is not about detention, because they're right on Deets Creek, it was about needing fill dirt, and that if they could get fill dirt from Deets Creek, then they would develop that instead, but they would develop it as R2. Again, I, I, I can't say what they'll do, but I understand the zoning is what it is.
So when we look at this picture here, this is just a concept, and in reality, uh, the entire pond area in the southeastern corner could be built as R2.
It, it could be. Now, again, I want to be real clear on this. The applicant stood up and said, we're not going to develop it, it's going to stay detention. I don't doubt his word on that. Understand how staff went into it. What we understood is that the reason that was not being developed and was detention is because they needed fill dirt, which point we said, well, you know, there's Deets Creek right there, you don't have to do probably detention, we'll give you permission to go test the soil to see if in fact you could desilt our creek, which is beneficial for us in capacity, and then they could put that dirt there and thus not have the need for fill, because it's a cost-effective way to get it up, and then they could develop those as lots. So perfectly fine, we, you gave them the zoning, they should have a right to develop under it. I'm not trying to backdoor jam them up.
But the section, but the section where the, where they're showing the, on this picture, the section where they're showing the detention pond, uh, that is not part of the zoning request to go to R6.
That's correct.
So if they took silt and dirt from Deets Creek and filled in that southeastern corner where there's currently a retention pond, because of the zoning request they're making tonight, they could not turn around and say, yeah, we've changed our mind, we're going to put a little cul-de-sac there with R6. But they could say, we've changed our mind, we're going to put a cul-de-sac with R2 there.
Correct. But, but again, I, I want to be real clear.
I, I understand.
Understand how staff got into it. I don't doubt the applicant, I'm not being that way.
I, I'm not, I'm not either. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the whole plan for what we're doing here. I mean, I, I think this layout is not, if it turned out this way, in my mind, that's not problematic. I think a traffic study would end up saying, yeah, a, a traffic stop sign four-way would be warranted and appropriate, and I think the cleaning out of the pond would make a nice recreational area for the area, if that's how it plays out.
Councilmember Hayward?
Uh, I watched the planning and zoning meeting, and, um, to me, I think with them trying, they're not getting the recommendation from Randolph to say they agree with this, like the last one, they got the recommendation, am I correct?
But they don't, they didn't ask for it on this one.
They didn't ask for it.
Because they don't need it.
Okay. Then, but my other question is, for me, you did not get it wrong for me, if it's not going to be better for the community, it doesn't need to be approved. I, I see it can all be developed as R2, because that's what it is. If we have a bunch of R6es where they are, we're just adding more, and I agree, it's probably a fifteen-home difference, but what are you doing different? You're getting the smaller lots, you're not giving us the larger lots, and I, I'm just not impressed, and I know that it's bigger, it's going to be part of a bigger development. So then it impacts us in that way. It's not just this little section for shirts, it's Selma, it's Universal City, so then who's to say that the traffic, depending on where it goes, is everyone going into the future? Some of that traffic from Universal City and Selma are coming our way, so it makes it worse. So for me, I'm more about doing what is better for the community. I don't see that this is being better for the community, it's not adding any value, so I can't support this.
Councilmember Brown?
I'll just start with the, uh, the, the whole tank concept. Get rid of water. I'd rather see rooftops in water out there from, from a bird.
And so we have mentioned that to the applicant, that if you do detention, Randolph generally prefers it to be dry as opposed to wet.
Right, we have, we have enough water retention over there in Deets Creek. But as far as the, uh, the housing, uh, you know, ten or fifteen homes, the difference, that is not going to make, make or break the difference. I mean, if, if, if all they did was want to do R2, we wouldn't be sitting here.
That's right.
Okay? And, and that ten or fifteen home difference wouldn't, wouldn't even be an issue. Uh, so right now, we're only talking about ten or fifteen homes, you know, it's, they're still nice-sized lots, uh, we're not, we're not getting into, you know, tiny home lots or anything like that. And I'm just, my other concerns are something that we have absolutely no control over, and that's our neighbors, you know, allowing, allowing the, uh, the development inside the APZ. So, uh, that really bothers me, you know, especially seeing that they've had a military leadership in that community for many, many, many years, but, uh, that, that's more of an impact than ten or fifteen homes. But I, you know, I, inconvenient, yes. And again, if you all look back at the development of Kensington Ranch, the original development had Savannah going straight, and then there was a large argument about, oh, it's going to become a racetrack, and so they put the curves in, and now it can't be a racetrack, but you can't put a stoplight there either. So, you know, it's, long-term, long-term consequences on that. Uh, so I, I'm okay with it as it is, because again, it's, it's going to continue to, to develop down there, um, and in some of those areas, we're not going to have a say, so...
Councilmember Watson?
Going to motion that we approve ordinance twenty-five S-001.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Uh, before we go into the vote, Mayor Protemp, you had comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna sort of say, I guess, in your, in our notes, the proposed single-family residential R6 replicates what is in the surrounding area and does not propose a different zoning that would allow for a mixture of housing types. The existing single-family residential district promotes a mixture of housing types as it creates a transition from the existing smaller lot homes in the surrounding areas. So up under R2, a mixture of housing types, is there, it, up under R2, what type of mixture house that would produce a, how to say it, less than fifteen houses?
Right.
You'd produce more density, right?
So, so I think what staff is trying to say, and again, the, what we did with the comp plan was we created this concept of a complete neighborhood, sort of this area, and, and within that area, what we want is a mix of uses, some commercial, when appropriate, it's worth the neighborhood, um, of different types, office, retail, et cetera. We wanted residential, some single-family, probably some townhomes, a little bit of multifamily, and then we wanted single-family on different lot sizes, right? We're okay with some smaller, some R6, some R7, but we don't ever, want everybody to come in and do R6 or R7, we want some bigger lots mixed in there too. And, and it's, that's the balance in the mix of lot types. And so again, I think from staff perspective, you know, certainly, um, there's a reason to approve this, there'd be a reason to approve a rezon on the property below it, to R6 as well then, um, there's a reason to say, yeah, it does make the community better, whichever way you want to kind of go with it. But I think that's the idea, that what we've heard from council is that we don't want all one-size residential lots. We don't want all small lots, nor are we going to mandate all really big lots, right? We need a balance and we need a mix, and it really is a judgment call as to what's the appropriate balance and mix.
Also, the, talking about the whole traffic study, so earlier, it's not lost on me, that earlier we were item number four, we talked about, hey, let's slow things down because of, let's have a traffic study. I think it was item number four on twenty-two fifty-two or twenty-two forty-two. Um, and then I think I've heard a comment today about, hey, maybe we need to... And then I think I've heard a comment today about, hey, maybe we need to do our due diligence and do a traffic study. But in the past, in past meetings, it was perfectly fine for your staff to advise when people complain about traffic. And now you're saying, well, the traffic is bad and maybe we need to sort of.
To to clarify, councilman, the question here, and I appreciate that, was specifically to installing a stop sign. And you've not heard staff, I don't believe, before ever say, we're fine installing a traffic control device without a study to determine whether that's appropriate. I will say this, and to your point, what staff typically gets up and says is, look, on zoning cases, it really isn't relevant, the existing condition on a zoning, because when properties develop, they come in and they build infrastructure that's required and they build toward the city's thoroughfare plan. And so what staff looks at is that larger, longer term position. And that's the position, we still take that position. I know some on council don't take that position because you recommended denial of projects because the immediate improvements were not there today, it seems, based on your statements to support that. So I think staff has been consistent, we're still consistent, which is, if you're talking about installing a traffic control device, there needs to be a study. But we aren't going to recommend denial of a zoning because the current infrastructure today is maybe not what we would like because we know development comes. I but I'm not sure what council's position on that is.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilmember McEluso.
So I uh, with with this project, I I tend to agree with the staff. When it came to the project that we had last year, I completely disagreed. I thought it was a bad recommendation and and there was a lot of problems with it. But this one, you know, I I I understand it's only ten fifteen houses less, it's only ten feet, this. But why, why is that better than having the R two lots? I mean, why is it that we have to continue to get smaller and smaller and smaller? I think at a certain point, and this isn't to to go necessarily against developers, but they're going to look to see how they can get the most houses that they can, the majority of the time, as long as they know it's going to sell. It's our job to say, well, are we okay with that happening everywhere? And to me, I'm not. And I think we do need a mixture of this of the lot sizes. And I don't see anything wrong with the current zoning that we have. If there was something that was brought to us and said, we want to go to R six because this is what we see as just being, you know, an improvement, this is why we need to get that zoning, I didn't see that. I just saw it as, hey, we're going to go R six because there is an opportunity to put in more lots there. And so with that, I do not agree with the change in rezon.
Council, any other comments? We do have a motion made by councilmember Watson, second by councilmember Brown. I must remind the council that this requires a five one vote for approval because it met the threshold of twenty percent. Once again, any other comments from council? None, all right, we'll call for the vote, councilmember Watson.
Aye.
McEluso.
Aye. Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
All right, we have three objections and three ayes, our motion does not pass.
That's cool, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number eight, ordinance number twenty five S zero zero three, conduct a public hearing and consider a request to rezone approximately twenty acres of land from general business, agricultural district and pre-development district to middle density residential district, more specifically known as five five two four Eckert Road, also known as a portion of Comal County Property Identification Number seven five four four nine and seven eight two three three, City Assurts, Comal County, Texas. Mr. Haas, floor is yours.
Thank you, council, mayor, Mr. Williams. This is ordinance twenty five S zero zero three, Samuel Haas, senior planner. So we get our bearings here, this is some satellite imagery of the property. The subject property is outlined in green here, it is approximately twenty acres. This is Eckert Road right here, just directly to the west, uh, just to the north is Interstate thirty five. Uh, this is the Cypress Point subdivision that is to the east here. And it should be noted that this kind of wedge shaped development here is going to be a um, an approved commercial office retail development. So on November twenty second, twenty twenty four, sixteen public hearing notices were sent, so far we've received nothing. Uh, one sign was placed on the property, one additional public hearing notice was sent to Comal ISD. And on December eighteenth, twenty twenty four, a notice was published in the San Antonio Express. So here's just a uh, a proposed zoning exhibit here. What, as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing uh, to rezone portions of their property to middle density residential district R five. This little table here, uh, to the right, just kind of shows what is the existing zoning in the area. To the north is general business, to the south is uh, general business and agricultural district. To the east is uh, some general business as well, along with some right away, uh, I'm sorry, and the west is right away at Eckert Road. So in October, city council approved an ordinance that created a new zoning district, and this is our first application for that zoning district. Just to sort of uh, brush up uh, the council on some of those requirements or some of those uh, dimensional and design standards are. So for this particular application, the dwelling units, uh, the density will be twelve dwelling units per acre. The minimum lot size is a quarter acre. The setbacks are twenty five for the front, side and rear are ten feet. The max height for this development can be thirty five feet, maximum previous coverage can be eighty percent. The parking requirements are one point five spaces per unit. And this, they're required to adhere to all multifamily site design requirements that are in Article nine. That is screening and buffering, um, interior landscaping requirements, things along that nature. So when looking at a rezone request, uh, staff looks at UDC section twenty one five four D, criteria for approval. Number one, whether the proposed zone change implements the policies of the adopted comprehensive land plan or any other applicable adopted plans. The comprehensive plan designates this area as regional corridor, uh, that is all this red right here. That designation is intended to provide commercial and entertainment areas that serve the region along major thoroughfares, and then it also has accommodations for multifamily complexes. And for this reason, the proposed zone change request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Number two, whether the proposed zone change promotes the health, safety, general welfare of the city. The UDC, as I mentioned earlier, was recently amended in October twenty second, twenty twenty four. Uh, and that was the ordinance twenty four S one fifty six, establishing this middle density district R five. Uh, and that was really crafted to uh, encourage multifamily developments that would be less dense, a little more com- uh, compatible with existing single family developments that are in shirts. Um, so the UDC does strive to ensure safe and orderly efficient development and to prevent the overcrowding of land and undue concentration or diffusion of population. This request is consistent with those policies in the UDC, and it does thus promotes the health, safety and general welfare. Number three, whether the use is permitted by the proposed zone change will be consistent and appropriate with the immediate area. Immediate area is mostly rural residences, also there is that Cypress Point subdivision. And then there's also parklands just further to the south. So the the residential uses that are permitted with middle density are consistent with what is in the immediate area. And number four, whether other factors are deemed relevant and important in the consideration of the amendment. Uh, so staff feels it's necessary to um, explain, say that the applicant previously requested R four, uh, which is much more dense, uh, thirty five units per acre, a little bit more intense land use. Um, at the November sixth, twenty twenty four Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission actually recommended that they try this new district that we have, R five. And so the applicant uh, agreed to do that and withdrew their R four application and came in with an R five request instead. Feel that it's worth mentioning to show the applicant is working with us. So the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the surrounding land uses meets the intent of the UDC. Uh, the shirts, fire, EMS and police have been notified of the zone change request and provided no objections. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance twenty five S zero zero three, and the shirts Planning and Zoning Commission met on December fourth, twenty twenty four, and made a recommendation of approval to, recommendation to approve the request with a six to zero vote. And the applicant is here to answer any questions if you have any.
Would the applicant like to have a presentation for us? No? All right. All right, this is a a public hearing, the time is eight o'clock. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the city council in reference to this subject? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is closed, it's eight o'clock. All right, council, floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Watson.
Motion that we approve ordinance twenty five S zero zero three.
Second.
Have motion made by councilmember Watson, second by councilmember Brown. Council, any comments? There are none, I'll go ahead and call for the vote, councilmember Watson.
Aye.
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 We have five ayes, no objections, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to item number nine. Ordinance number twenty five S zero zero four, conduct the public hearing and consider amendments to part three of the shirts code of ordinances, unified development code to Article eleven, section twenty one dot eleven dot six, prohibited signs and section twenty one dot eleven dot seventeen temporary signs. Ms. Delgado, floor is yours.
Good evening, council, this is for ordinance twenty five S zero zero four, a UDC amendment for signs specifically for twenty one eleven six prohibited signs and twenty one eleven seventeen temporary signs, Emily Delgado, planning manager. So as the council may remember, back in November, we did back to back city council workshops about temporary signs, got a lot of um, feedback and direction at those workshops. Uh, the second workshop, it was discussed that the current regulations for temporary signs should be modified. We should have increased um, temporary sign height in area. And additionally, we should provide clarification on the prohibition for wind driven signs. So as a refresher, these are your types of temporary signs, wind signs, uh, A-frame balloon sign or the inflatable guy, right? Banner signs and bandit. So going just as a refresher again, the current UDC Article eleven bases the temporary sign area and height based off of the roadway classification. So depending on how large the roadway is, determines how large your temporary sign can be. We also have limitations on setbacks, time limitations and the number of signs. Based off of the two workshops and the feedback that was received, staff is proposing three amendments, the first one being twenty one eleven six for prohibited signs. Currently, the UDC does not have direct language prohibiting the wind driven feather flag or the inflatable balloon signs. So the proposed amendment states wind driven signs, including feather flags and inflatable slash balloon signs, are prohibited regardless of size. The next one is twenty one eleven seventeen B for the maximum area. Again, the current UDC uh, is based off of the roadway classification, which is sometimes difficult for the applicant to know what their classification is. So to streamline that, the proposed amendment is to have a maximum area of thirty six square feet. And then the next is twenty one eleven seventeen C for the maximum height. Again, eliminating the um, street classification and just allowing a maximum height of six feet regardless of where you are in the city. So here's just those red lines. So when we look at UDC amendments, we look at twenty one four seven D for the criteria for approval. The first one being the proposed amendment promotes the health, safety or general welfare of the city. The proposed amendment would allow for larger in both height and area for temporary signs, which does allow a greater flexibility for property owners and businesses. Additionally, it does include clarity on what signs would be prohibited, which would be helpful for business owners as well before they, you know, go and purchase signs. Number two, an amendment to the text is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the UDC. And staff feels that the proposed amendment does meet the goals and desires that were identified by city council at the November workshop. Additionally, previous UDC amendments have been about adding that greater flexibility, adding that clarity. That is exactly what this PDD amendment, excuse me, this UDC amendment is trying to accomplish. Adding greater flexibility, allowing larger signs, but also clarifying what signs we do not want. Number three, the proposed amendment corrects an error, meets the challenge of changing conditions or is in response to changes in state law. For this UDC amendment, it's really trying to meet that change in conditions, the desire of the city council, and again, to meet other UDC amendments to add that clarity. There are no other factors at this point which are deemed relevant and important in the consideration of the amendment. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance twenty five S zero zero four, and the Planning and Zoning Commission met on December fourth. They did hold a public hearing and made a recommendation of approval to city council with a six zero vote.
All right, this is a public hearing, and the time is eight oh five. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the city council in reference to this subject? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is closed, the time is eight oh six. All right, council, floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, thank, thanks to the staff for all the work they've done on this and and cleaning it up and making it a little bit clearer for our our businesses out there. I I personally still have a problem with this. I I think it's, I I think it's kind of silly. I I agree with Councilwoman Hayward in our previous discussions that I certainly wouldn't want to drive down three thousand nine and see, or any of our streets, and see a business with forty seven feather flags out front. But to ban them entirely, I think is just a little bit overkill. For example, last Friday, the Knights of Columbus had their monthly fish fry and they had like two or three feather flags out in front of their organization, letting people that drive up and down the shirts parkway know that they were having their their fish fry. And to sit there and say that they can't put up that easy to put up feather flag, put it up and then take it down that night. But they can go out and I guess build a six foot by six foot wooden sign and as a temporary sign and put it out in front of their building and drag it back and forth. I I, to me, that's just ridiculous. Uh, again, the the thirty six square foot, the six foot height, I think that's a lot clearer than what we had before. But to turn around and just arbitrarily ban, you know, a a relatively simple, easy to put up, easy to take down, uh, flag for a special event or a function uh, on on an occasional basis and just say, you just can't do it anymore. I think it's a little bit overkill for the city and I think it's a little bit overly restrictive. So um, I I myself, I can't approve or vote for approving the changes as they as they're written now.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, and uh, I I know when we get into these discussions, a lot of times, things go back and forth and and whatnot. And after I read this, you know, I saw the clarity that you had in there. And and I have to agree with Councilman Davis, I think some of the, just the total ban is is maybe a little bit too uh, too restrictive in there. Yeah, I know we're trying to clean up the streets, we don't want people leaving things out for weeks on end that turn from a nice bright uh, flag to a ratty tatty, you know, rag uh, flying around. That has, you know, we we can't accept that, obviously. But as he said, you got the Knights of Columbus, I mean, it, you know, ten or twelve times a year, you know, they have their fish fries and uh, people look forward to that. And yes, everybody knows where it's at, but at the same time, they use it as a, not just as an attraction, but as a directional help too, you know, enter here, uh, kind of thing. And that's not the only one, it's just an easy one to 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 use. Uh, and then uh, you know, for example, in our business, you know, balloons are really popular for open houses. You know, and that's not like it's on the street to uh, you know, to block traffic or anything like that, but it's certainly there in front of a, of a private residence, you know, and. Anyway, so yeah, I I like the amount of work, I appreciate it. But after it's put on paper and we're not discussing it among seven people at one time, uh, sometimes the words come out not quite what I meant.
Any other comments? No, I I tend to agree with councilmember Davis and councilmember Brown. It's not just the Knights of Columbus, although they have their sign for, what, four hours in one month? But even here at the civic center this weekend, we had a feather, a a wind sign. It was a special card event that they were having just to advertise that they were here in our civic center. And we will have to restrict something like that. We don't know exactly what's going on into the civic center, what functions are being occurred in there. And this is one of the. And this is one of those signs that is provided to say, hey, come in and see what we have. So it is a little more restrictive than I thought it would be.
Yeah, so I apologize, Mayor, I wish, again, in hindsight, I should have brought the presentation we provided on November nineteenth, which allowed feather flags, which sounds like what council wants to do. I'm also hearing we want to allow renters of the Civic Center to post temporary signage, which we generally don't allow. They probably put it up without our approval, but that we want to allow renters of the Civic Center to put up temporary signs. So what we could do, certainly if you want to table this item, continue it, we can come back with what we presented on the nineteenth, maybe adding a provision to allow feather flags for renters of the Civic Center as well. I mean, did that better capture it? But I'm trying to recall what the concerns were on the nineteenth, that that version didn't make it through.
I think from most of, from what I understand, the council is, we, you know, a temporary sign is, you know, one or two days. We don't want these signs to stay out for months.
Exactly.
Is, is, is a topic that we, we, we just don't want to see these signs continuously as you draw it down.
So the clarification then, if I, if I may, is, and this I guess would be the challenge is, so like the Civic Center, a renter for the, could, this I guess is the struggle. So, is what you're saying is that people can put up, we don't want temporary signs up for a long period of time, just a short period of time, but they can put them up for a short period of time frequently?
Not frequently.
No.
Cause it's a challenge enforcement to say, hey, you had it up for two days, you gotta take it down.
When I, when I initially wanted this, I'm sorry, it was to engage the businesses. What can we do for them? So, and it's temporary, definitely. I didn't want it to last, get faded, and look tacky.
Right.
So what could we possibly do and have requirements? That was the initial.
So what was the thought, maybe, I think what staff's looking for then to understand that is, so how long and how often are you thinking that we can go back and work something up?
I would say no more than a week is fine, right? Go ahead, councilmember Davis.
Thank you. And to me, to me, you know, I, again, I, I don't want to see, I'm like Councilman Brown, I don't want to see feather flags permanently installed, you know, a whole row of them there, and then they're getting old and tattered. But I mean, if they're putting them up for a function, a special event, we have that option, I, I'm okay with that. Okay. The Civic Center, it, to me, is kind of different. Okay. We have folks that put on events and rent the senior center, or the Civic Center. To me, the issue with that is, it's back off the road, and I guess they're, want to put some kind of sign or something up by the front Shirts Parkway. Well, I would think that that would not be a prom, that would, that would not be needed once our digital sign is reinstalled, wherever we're reinstalling it. Because I would think that if somebody is renting the Civic Center, that they would be able to advertise that they are in the Civic Center on our digital signs, people drive up and down the, the Shirts Parkway. Sure, so yeah, Linda, what Linda said is that we do have a policy, and again, there's some limitations, restrictions, how long you have to rent for, what you have to rent, et cetera. We can bring that back next meeting on the LED sign. Again, they were supposed to remark this week, and they have one more permit issue to do, and then that should be going and installed. But we can certainly do whatever you would like to do with regard to that. And so again, I think what we're still looking for is the consensus of how long you want them up. We don't want them up too long, but sort of what is too long?
So Brian, just for clarification purposes, the ordinance as it is and is remaining, or would remain under what's proposed is a hundred and eighty days maximum.
That's a temp sign, right? Yeah, and so that, if you want to allow.
If we, that, right now, what was being proposed, to disallow feather flags, so a feather flag could be put out for a hundred and eighty days.
Right, if you just wanted to eliminate the prohibition on the wind-driven altogether, and we treated feather flags like all other temp signs, then those would be the, the rules that would, they would follow.
I would say thirty days is plenty if you're advertising new business. You know, you, we, we talk about, the same thing with the, the issue when we were having the garage sales. We thought there was gonna be, you know, individuals that would be doing their garage sale on a week, every weekend. It really has not happened, and I think most of our residents understand, most of our businesses understand. The abuse is very minimal, if any. And I would think that if you, you open up a new business, you want to advertise your new, thirty days is fine.
So is the idea maybe, again, with that, given the general compliance of Shirts folks on it, do we even need to, I mean, and one thing would be, again, is how long we manage that. What we could do is just put the ordinance and say it's a thirty-day on the weather flag, we don't even require a permit, and we just let folks know that's what it is, and they, we trust them to follow the regulation, we don't even permit it, and, and, and rely on them to say, hey, that's what the ordinance is, I'm gonna stick with that. And then we wouldn't probably have as much time on enforcement and things like that, too.
Councilmember Hayward.
As you were saying that, I was thinking, even with having any type of ordinance where you give them time, who's gonna go out there and police that? How do you know if we say thirty days? How do we know it was thirty days? Are we expecting everyone to be honest? When I watched Planning and Zoning, I saw one of the commissioners say she would put her signs up and take them down every night. Not everybody does that, and we're expecting everyone to do certain things that they don't do. I just think about all the places that I driven down, when you drive down some of these roads, those flags clearly needed to be replaced, or the balloon man nearly, clearly needed to be replaced, and it just looks tacky. And it doesn't, I, maybe it does, but I have not seen it, when I'm driving by, it doesn't cause me to go in to say, oh, there's a new place open.
Right, so.
And for me, when I want to know when something's coming, it's, it's in the magazine. I see it and I go, hey, I think I want to go to that restaurant, I want to go to that business. So, I don't like the idea of it.
Yes, ma'am, so understood. So again, trying to break clarity on staff work. So, we currently require a permit for temporary signs. We get some compliance with that, we get some flaunting of that, right? If we're going to track a thirty-day period, be it consecutively, or no, you're fine to do it for two days here, and then come back three months later and do it for two days, and then come back three months later, but over the course of a, a calendar year, you get up to thirty days, right? We can require them to pull a permit, okay? I mean, and, and so there's a way to track the time limit up, right? Because we know we issue permits, we have enough staff, be they there in code enforcement, building inspections, that we can say, hey, just double-check that they didn't put it up early, took it down. Again, if we want to require the permit, that would be how we would track it. Now again, what count, staff would want to understand if we have council support for though, is that if we go out, somebody hasn't pulled a permit, we're gonna tell them to take it down, and we're not gonna let them leave it up with a grace period, and that y'all are okay with that, right? As opposed to then staff gets a bunch of calls saying, why did you make them take down? Well, you made them take it down Friday afternoon, they didn't have time to come in and get a permit at the window, and there were events over the weekend, and why are we hassling them, kinda thing? I mean, I just want to understand the expectation. Now the other way you can do it is sort of an honor system, where they don't have to get a permit, so we're not messing with that, but we're relying on them to say, I'm gonna keep within the thirty days, and there's not a way for us to track it. That's the challenge with that, and so some people will try to follow the honor system, some probably won't. But, but just to understand, that's a little bit of the issue if you want to do anything other than a thirty-day consecutive, meaning you can come in, you get it thirty days, but again, the Knights, for example, they do it when they have the fish fry, which is not a consecutive thing. But we could, we could enforce that.
We can do thirty days, no more than three times a year. Now, it stops them from doing it next thirty days, and the next thirty days. It's entirely up to the council at this point. Do you want to table it until they revise it? Do you want to make amendments to this motion?
My motion that we table this, do I have to say the ordinance too?
Okay, there's a bit in the motion to table ordinance number twenty-five S zero zero four, and second by councilmember Brown. You table it?
I, I think, Mayor, the, the lack of clarity, we're happy to come back next meeting, we just don't know what to come back with.
I think, I, I think the direction the council wants to go is thirty days, no more than three times during the year.
Okay, so up to nine, so you could, and just.
Not consecutive.
Right, so you can do.
Thirty days.
Thirty days, you have to take a month off, you can then do it another thirty days, take a month off and do another thirty days.
And then you're restricted for four months.
But if you come in and say, I just want to do it for two days, you're eating up a thirty-day window, is that?
That's fine.
Right, so your total max is ninety days. I'm asking for clarification, I'm not saying that's what staff, we're happy to do whatever council wants.
To me, doing that, Mayor, may I, you saying thirty days, and if they just come in and say they want to, that complicates matters. Because if you say, oh, I just want two, and then they change their mind. I mean, it, I think we're, I think we're complicating matters with three times a year, thirty days, that kinda thing. I think we're just, we're making it more complicated. And it's sort of like we, we agreed, and we disagreed, now we agree, now we're disagreeing again on how it is supposed to go. And that's sending the wrong message, I think, is because we're not agreeing on this, and we'll keep discussing it as if we're breaking it down and we're getting into the weeds of things. And we don't really need to get into the weeds of things. We're either gonna allow them or not allow them, that's the way I look at it. Because then it becomes, if they have to come in and get a permit, then someone on staff has to track that to make sure it's thirty days. And then what if someone doesn't have a permit? I mean, then they're looking at that, I think it, it just complicates the whole issue, in my opinion.
Understood, I will say this from a staff perspective. Again, we have a very nice permitting software system, we appreciate that, it lets us do a lot of things. So it's not necessarily, from a staff perspective, a challenge in breaking it down the way the system lets us, it's really for the applicant.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, and, and again, I think we're, we're, we need to focus, as Michelle said earlier, on businesses. You know, this is for the businesses. I know that our intent is not to stop a one-day garage sale sign or a one-day open house sign, you know, the, from individuals and whatnot.
So, so just to be clear, we do pull a lot of garage sale signs for one day.
Okay, well, but what I'm saying, I, I, I think what we're doing is we're mixing, you know, business and individual, you know, whatever. You know, it'd be like saying, you know, lemonade stand, you know, go pull that sign, you can't have a sign up there. But definitely for businesses, if you're out there on three double oh nine or Shirts Parkway, or seventy-eight, or, or whatever, yeah, I, I mean, we need, we need to have some standards, some controls, some, some level of understanding, you know, that the businesses can clearly say, okay, I can't, I can't, I need to go down and pull a permit, I'm good with that. You know, I have a grand opening, or I have a special this weekend, I want to make sure I have, you know, red wavy signs and a balloon guy, you know. Whereas the person that wants to have a, you know, an open house to sell their house, you know, should they have to go down and get a permit for a sign on their property?
So, so a, a for-sale sign is exempt, it's, it's a different type of sign. So you can put a for-sale sign, what we tend to get are the open house, that it's not the one on your lot, it's the one out on Shirts Parkway.
Right, and, and I get that one, I get that one, but I'm just saying, you know, if you have it on your lot, I mean, you know, because we, we have a sister city that their intent was not to, to restrict that, but that's the way that it got written, and their code enforcement was enforcing that.
Yeah.
You know, and it caused a lot of confusion.
No, I can appreciate that, yeah, just to be clear, a for-sale sign is a different category of sign, different set of regs.
Along with an open house, along with a garage sale?
Garage sale is a specific kind, I think the open house we typically consider to be a, a for-sale sign.
Same to you.
Categorize it the same way.
Councilmember Davis.
Our, our permitting software, I mean, how, how, how flexible is that? Can someone go and apply for a permit online without coming into the city? Oh, yeah. And if you set up a permit for a flag sign, could they feasibly go online, apply for that permit? The system says it's good for a day, or two, or three, whatever we set in there, with zero fee? And once they submit that, they get their elec, their permit electronically, I mean? Yeah, the approval's electronically, somebody has to touch it, right? It's not a fully automated system where you stick this in and it's auto-approved, somebody has to go look at it, but that's a counter. Cause I'm guessing, I'm guessing then, if, if you, if you're gonna turn around and say, flag, I mean, I, I guess we're saying the inflatable wavy guys as a no-go. But if they've got a flag sign, or even the inflatable way, I know we had concerns about the height and how close it was to the street and all that kinda good stuff. But theoretically, we could track it that way, where if somebody goes online and say, like the Knights of Columbus, they can go in there that month and say, I need a permit for three flag signs for one day, we know they've got them, and then someone in the staff code enforcement's running those reports of who's got these things and how long they're, they're for, I mean, it's. Yeah, what they'll do is though, if they're out looking at signs and they see a sign up, and this is, take a general temporary sign, right? So you got a temporary sign that currently is allowed in the code, if they go by and look at it and they go, ah, that's new, they'll sometimes go, let me check and see if they pulled a permit for that, just like they do as they're driving through a neighborhood, and somebody's doing roof work, and they go, eh, let me just check, make sure those guys got a permit, let me check the system, same, same way. I mean, cause I mean, I'm looking at, at, looking at it from a thirty-thousand-foot view, I mean, we, even if we changed the temporary sign to a six-month period for a six-by-six sign, not to exceed thirty-six square feet, no more than six-foot in height, I, I'm sure there's an education process with our code enforcement to say, oh, by the way, temporary signs have, have a hundred and eighty days. I, I'm sure code enforcement is not sitting there looking at, well, I got the request today, I'm gonna put this on my calendar to go out six months from now to make sure it's taken down. But as they drive around and they see these things, like you said, you know, just like you see a roofing guy, they're gonna see this temporary sign and say, hey, that thing's been there for a while, let me go back and check and see how long it's been there. I, I don't think there's anything the city can do that's gonna be a hundred percent perfect to hold everybody in the city accountable, and to the hour, or minute, or day of signs. But I, I just think there's gotta be some flexibility for some of these different entities to, to be able to advertise their business, to, to draw attention to what, something that's going on, without just putting a hammer down and saying absolutely nothing. Yeah, and, and so again, we can certainly do that, and so I think, again, what I'm hearing the discussion say, and so let me, let me ask this. There clearly seems to be a majority of council wanting to allow feather flags. I'll ask this, does that extend to inflatables, or is it really just, no, no inflatables, but I'm, feather flags I'm good with? Or not, six and one-half dozen the other? But I'm looking for a majority of nods or shakes.
Councilmember McAluso.
Definitely not the balloon guys. You know, I, I guess I should have probably re-listened to the meeting from the last time, because I didn't recall the feather flags being prohibited. I thought it was just limited to a height, size, but I, I guess I was wrong. I definitely knew that there was no interest in having the balloon guys and the big inflatable gorillas and stuff like that, so. I guess I could live with the, the feather flags, but I think they would have to be under the height restriction and the other rules that are said forth.
So I'm looking for, again, a majority of folks on the balloon guy, you're good?
I'm okay, I agree.
That's three, not that I'm counting votes.
Hey.
Okay.
Four, yeah, I get, I count today.
Alright, so again, what we're talking about at this point is allowing feather flags, and allowing feather flags up to the six feet in height. Is that, yep? And, and what we're inclined to do is, we're gonna treat those different than a temporary sign, so we're not gonna let you have it up the hundred and eighty days, right? And what I'm hearing folks say is that, and let staff go back and try this, is that I don't want you to have them up too long of a stretch at once. So maybe thirty days, maybe a month, right, thirty-one for some. But I also am okay with, let's take an organization that every month, over Friday and Saturday, right, does an event, and they want to put them up routinely. So if you think about that, they have them up for twenty-four days, it's not even the full thirty days. There's some window I'm willing to allow. And so the question then is, we can, we can write it that way, right? That, that says, look, you, you've got a certain number of days, you can have it up, you can either. You can either break that down into smaller bits, or you can have them one fell swoop, or you can do it in two batches, whichever you want to do." The question kind of would be, is this thirty days what we're thinking, which is, and that would be annually? Or is it, "No, that's not quite enough. Doesn't have to be equal both ways. So what we'll do is let you do the wind-driven signs, the feather flags for, say, up to ninety days a year, and that can either be in one batch or broken down." And again, you could break down somewhere in thirty days at a time. But I think what some businesses have, a new business coming in, I'm hearing some people say, "Yeah, give them thirty days." But then you've also got, well, if they do a seasonal special, they, thirty days in the spring, thirty days in the winter. Right, we can go either way. I think the question really is, how many days do you want to allow somebody to have feather flags up a year or order of magnitude?
Mayor Proton Westbrook?
Yes, sir. So I'd like to start off, make a comment.
Okay.
And before I call the question, I can make a comment and a short story. One, you've been extremely professional and patient. And so which segues into the short story. This reminds me of the time I started country line dancing, country dancing at Cowboys. The leader, the follower is only as good as the leader. And it seems to, which goes into, hey, you're having difficulty following because there's difficulty leading. There's no consensus, and you're getting all these different directions here. And I don't blame you, because I've been there. I've been a poor leader, and I've been a poor follower. But we have a motion on the floor, and at some point in time, we keep going down the segue. We either need to vote the motion up or down, and then you can bring it back next month, and we can try it again, or we can vote in favor of the motion. But this is, she's already made a motion. We've already had a second. We keep going around in circles.
No, I would agree with you, Councilman, if I may. I mean, I think the motion that was made was deny. I clearly get the sense there's a majority that's not comfortable approving what's before you, and it would deny.
The motion was to table.
To table, I'm sorry.
But I think the question, the question has been called. But I think the, what you were looking for was specifics. Were those, was that actually provided to you?
Right. I think we're getting closer. And so again, let me, if I may offer, and again, I don't want to drag this out. I don't think staff has any problem with this sort of discussion. I think Councilman Brown's comment was very much accurate, and we would agree. You talk about these things in the abstract during a meeting, and then you see it on paper after you've slept on it. And we talked about that. Let's sleep on it. Let's come back and look at it. And that helps you shape it. So often, these are an iterative process. So let me be very clear. Staff doesn't have a problem with any of the way this thing has gone. What we would say is, this is often what happens with a tricky, challenging question. There's not a right or wrong answer. It's fine. So we'll try to move it along. And so I think we've got some direction. I think the only thing that staff would say is trying to get a feeling, come back with a couple of versions, is, kind of how long are you thinking we want to allow feather flags up? Is it for ninety days? Is it thirty days? It's kind of what I'm getting, that we don't want it less than thirty. Maybe don't want it more than ninety. And that can be either in one period, or it can be broken up electively. Either in one straight period, or... Or you can break it up.
All right. I think you have your direction. And the question has been called by Mayor Proton Westbrook. Motion's been made to table the ordinance twenty-five S zero zero four by Councilmember Watson, and second by Councilmember Brown. So we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Mayor, as a point of clarification, if we say nay, you're going to bring it back next month.
If you say aye, he's bringing it back.
Then y'all got to sit up here and keep voting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Say nay, we're going to keep voting.
The difference between the table and the postpone is the table will be brought back up on the next meeting. The postpone is a time lapse there.
I'll defer to you, yes, sir.
So that's the difference between the both. Okay. So we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Councilmember Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Six ayes. No objections to table.
Emily, you were correct at your planning and zoning meeting. The statement you made, you were absolutely correct.
All right. Item number ten is quarterly updates. City Council approved the zoning and special use permit ordinances in relationship to the current development status. And item number eleven, information regarding a pending update on the city of Shirts Water and Wastewater master plans. Information packets were provided to council and available for the public to view at our website, shirts.com. With that, we'll go on to requests and announcements. Council, any possible updates or information requested from staff? Be none. Council, any possible items you'd like to place on the future agenda? Be none. All right. Announcements by council members. Mayor Proton Westbrook?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Davis?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilmember Watson?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember McAluso?
Nothing, sir.
Councilmember Hayward?
Nothing. I just want to let everyone know that the new Texas Town and Cities magazine you'll get digitally, please read it. It'll be very helpful during the eighty-ninth legislature.
Councilmember Brown?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, the time is now eight thirty-six. We stand adjourned.